Pretty cool country to visit.
You can have the same entry each week, like, oh, boy. I feel bad for you.
Well, I slipped out early, so I didn't have to rush so much tonight. It was either slip out or start another project, and I'm like, I'm not starting nothing else, because then I'll run late.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just slip out. My clock is five fifty-nine.
I had a full minute to spare.
Well, I have six o'clock by my clock, so if everyone will please stand, we'll call the meeting in order, starting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone will please continue standing for the opening prayer.
Would you all please join me in the spirit of prayer? Great Creator, as we have gathered before you this evening, we celebrate the ways you continue to move within each and every one of our lives and within this community. Lord, I pray that you would bless this time, allow for the leaders of our community to continue to vision and live into mission to accomplish what needs to be done. Lord, I pray that you would be with us this evening, in our meeting, and after, as we go out into the world, in your Son's holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much.
I guess I'm gonna have to tell my wife not to play dance videos on my computer before I bring it to a commission.
That was so weird, because I thought I heard something, and I just kept... But it kind of paused when we did, when we were saying that.
I thought Oisín Locks on the phone.
Okay. Any citizens to be heard?
Thought I would introduce myself. My name's Reverend Blake Sandwood. I'm the new senior pastor at Garnett United Methodist Church, and I also serve at Baker University as their campus minister as well.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
And your partner there?
The upper management right here is telling me it's dinner time. So next time, we'll stay for the business.
Okay. Again, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And welcome to Garnett.
Thank you.
Governing body comments. Commissioner Cole?
I don't really have anything. Just go out and eat rotary pancakes on Tuesday and go vote.
That's right.
Yeah.
I have something similar. It is election season. I just wanted to remind everybody to do your civic duty, go out and vote. And it's an off year, so there may not seem like a lot on the ballot, but we do have one-third of the city commission getting elected, which, this is my annual reminder, that local government affects your lives way more than national government, so go out, exercise a franchise vote. You can vote now. Early voting is open. You don't have to wait till Tuesday to cast your vote. There's a potential for up to three new members of the school board. There will certainly be two new members of the school board, so there are things on the ballot that affect our lives daily.
I think we're all singing the same tune. You know, I know a lot of people don't normally vote in off years, but if you don't go out to vote for any other reason, there is one item on there that affects every single citizen, and that's the sales tax. And we need your voice to be heard, whether it's for or against, because that gives not only us, but whoever takes over in January, a good read of what direction you want the city to go. And so, go vote. Okay. Consent agenda. Approval of the minutes from the October fourteenth regular commission meeting, and item B is approval of the semi-monthly bills and payroll in the amount of two ninety-three eight fifty-nine forty-eight.
I do not have any questions or concerns.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carrying. Regular business. Consideration of water treatment building assessment.
All right. In the massive packet you received, there was a great Google link that didn't work the first time. There were two proposals given to you for an assessment, or a potential assessment, by two firms. The third firm that was reached out to declined to provide one. And then you were also provided a follow-up email with a updated proposal. Also included in that packet was a recommendation from our water plant consultant, Nalash Kethari. I have him on the phone right here. Him and I have spoken about this a couple of times. We both, even prior to his recommendation letter, both had settled on one of the firms, just because it was a complete, what we asked for them to do. They followed up and sent us what we asked them to provide. And so, I believe there was eight criterion that he was looking for, and five out of the eight, he had chosen the one firm. The other three, they both kind of tied, per se. And so, it is his recommendation, as well as mine, to move forward with, I'm gonna butcher their name, Braun Schrobert. They had a more complete proposal. They also provided an example of one they had given in a previous entity, firm, business that they had done a proposal for, which was nice. You kind of got an example, and you got to see what kind of quality work they do. And so, Nalash, if you want to... If I missed anything, feel free.
I think Travis, you did a pretty damn good job of explaining where we are, and I can take any questions, or you can take any questions the commissioners may have. By the way, good evening to all of you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Yeah. I do not have any questions, and I would have to agree, it was definitely a lot more thorough, by far, in the examples.
Even the follow-up one that we received, I still think they blew it out of the water, too.
Yeah. Just the workmanship, or the ability to put their best foot forward to send us something. I mean, definitely a difference in the two.
Yeah.
So, I don't disagree with your recommendations.
Nora, it... A two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-page packet with another fifty that followed up to go through from yesterday to today with a full work schedule was... It was just impossible to do, but looking through them, there was no comparison. I thought this was a far better proposal, and I'm glad that you guys' recommendations land where my...
You can tell they put a lot more time into it than the other one did, honestly.
It's attention to detail, and that's exactly what you want from anyone that does a job for you, so...
One of the highlights that we both noticed, too, was the other firm was gonna basically subcontract out the electrical, mechanical, whereas these guys were all in-house.
Doing it all in-house, yep.
And so, that was a benefit, I thought. That's really a big benefit. They're gonna dig in there and oak everything.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So, do we need a motion?
If you choose to move forward, yes, I would like a motion if you choose so.
I make a motion that we move forward with the Berner-Schrober proposal for, let's see, evaluation of the water treatment facility.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Questions? With that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Super.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If we can keep you online, or I can let you go.
I think I guess I'll let you guys have a fun time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Your support, thank you so much.
Take care.
We'll be in touch.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, thanks.
Consideration of the wastewater contract and amendment.
So, I provided you guys a copy of this at the last meeting. Another solid seventy-six pages, plus a five-page amendment. And so, the long and short of this, Dan Fulcrum is here with Midwest. The long and short of it, this is kind of the next phase in the wastewater project. This is for moving forward with the design to keep pushing along and trying to get the wastewater stuff fixed. So, I'll let... Dan, if you want to forward to address anything or add anything, feel free.
I'll say, I'm unhappy to answer any questions. If you guys, any input? I mean, I guess the simple part of it is, your system has some older... Or is the system that is as old as the town is, and so, the INI factors is like an eight-point-three. The state likes it to be less than five, and so, it's just gonna continue to get worse and worse. So, we do work for some entities that have ones that are up ten to fifteen. So, you're not alone in that area, but the sooner you address it and look at it, when it fits within your scope of capital projects, it's a good thing to pay attention to. And it does benefit the whole town at large, just not like it helps one area or the other area, it's the whole town benefits, everything goes from a high side to a low side.
I just have a quick question, just for the sake of asking it, because people have mentioned it. Replacing the entire line, taking out the dilapidated materials and everything with new, there isn't a way... People were under the impression that you could run another line in the collapsed lines that are there, and to me, that doesn't make sense, but for the sake of asking it, maybe it does. I don't know.
No, there are techniques of...
Okay.
We call it in situ form. It's a fiberglass-type material, looks like a sock. They run it through the pipe, and they fill up the pot water, it expands and contracts, but it's a... I mean, it's a pipe inside of a pipe, so the key component with sewer to keep water out are rubber gaskets. And that's why everything that's been pre-1970, that's when PVCs and rubber gaskets became prominent, that's those gaskets will keep the water out. So, if you put a fiberglass line inside clay tile, you're still, every time you do a service line, you have a gap. So, the roots can still come in, the water can still come in. Now, you can take that and push it on up the service line a few feet and improve that. So, from our experience, we've done towns, or been involved in towns where we've done in full in situ form, we've done every replacement, they will allow us to, we only drop the INI fifty percent, and generally only thirty percent. So, with your INI being eight times, and you really want it to be three, if you get a fifty percent improvement, you're not... You're still above the target high point that KDE wants you to have. So, that's why we're looking at, the recommendation is full line replacement. Now, there are other techniques where we, you call pipe bursting, where they'll run a line up through it, they'll burn the pipe in place, and pull in a brand-new pipe, that's a big, thick, heavy wool polyethylene pipe. Then we go down a heat saddle, dig it up, and bring a new gasket, a PVC lineup, and connect to the service line at the top of it. So, that's still... If you get to an area where, say, there used to be ten homes there, and now there's only two, it makes sense to go do the pipe bursting, but if you get into a city block where there's every house, and you're gonna be digging up a ten-by-ten hole, ever fifty feet, well, pretty soon you just got a bunch of patches, you're just a little dug in. So, as we go through and do the final plan, so, we'll make recommendations as to whether we'll do a full, open-cut trenching, full-line replacement, whether we do pipe bursting, there'll be some places we'll do in situ form, because it makes sense. So, if we go down an alley that has five fiber-optic lines over a gas line, and it just doesn't make sense to dig it up, we'll go through there, and we'll do in situ form in that area, and move on, because it's too expensive to do the full-line replacement.
Okay. So, is that probably more for newer, like, the sections of town that maybe have the newer pipe? That is probably gonna... That you might use a different technique, rather than a full-line replacement?
Kind of comes down to the number of houses, and how much we dig it up.
Okay.
And it'll also come down, either one of those trenchless technologies don't get rid of the sags and the swells. So, when you did the old clay tile, we were just happy to have a sewer. They didn't pay attention that it was perfectly in line and no sags, and there may have been sand, or there may have been water that went around the pipe and moved it and allowed it to settle. The only thing, the only technique that gets rid of the settlement and the sags is a full-line replacement. And when you get into those trenchless technologies, like the pipe bursting, a lot of times it's ninety percent of the full-line replacement, or the in situ form, it's gonna be seventy-five percent. Sometimes it'll get down to fifty, but most of the time it's up, it seems like it's more of an opportunity cost, they charge as much as they can, and it costs seventy-five percent. So, you got a line that potentially will have sags, it has... Still have areas where you can get root intrusion and leaks, so you don't get that good seal that a plastic gas will give you.
So, as you go through the process, in a six-block area, you may use three different techniques? Maybe?
Possible, but, I mean, we like to... We're probably not gonna be that sporadic.
Right.
Pick a section, like, hey, this is the best technique, because we don't want that guy jumping from manhole to manhole, or area to area.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but in our initial bidding, we had a proposal for the in situ form, and I think it was somewhere eleven to twelve million for the full project with that technology. And if it's not gonna... If it's only gonna get us part of the way there, it means...
I think it'll get you fifty percent of... It'll get rid of fifty percent of the INI.
Yeah.
So...
Which is still not good enough.
And if you're going to... To me, if you're gonna go to that much trouble, why not make it like new and get a hundred-year product out of it?
Yeah.
Not... Because, I mean, a clay tile, it's inert, it's not gonna move, but whatever caused those sags and different things, it's still gonna be there, and we're not taking care of the problem that it's root caused.
Yeah.
If there are sections, say it goes under a school, or it goes downtown, there'll be areas where it doesn't make sense to tear it up, we'll use those technologies in those places.
Okay.
Thank you for explaining that.
That helps a lot, yeah. Okay. So, next step on this would be?
Next step would be, if you choose to move forward with this contract, to make a motion to vote and approve.
We would know more a week from now.
That's what it does.
True story.
That's what I... That's where I'm at, too. It's like, does it...
What, I mean...
Can we put it on...
Can we table it?
Well, we won't know it on the next one, either, because it's the night before, right?
No, no.
No, no, it's right.
No, it'll be after.
No, we have two weeks.
Our next meeting will be after.
It's on the tenth, yeah. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna table this till the next meeting?
If that's what you choose to do.
Is that...
Does it cost us anything in terms of, do we lose?
I mean, the longer you wait, the more... I mean, the bill just keeps growing. This doesn't grow, but completion or replacement does.
I don't feel like two weeks.
But...
What is your deadline for the SRF? That's the only thing...
That application got submitted after the last meeting, sixteenth, I think.
So, yeah, as long as you made what you need for the... To get, keep going with the SRF, so you don't lose that funding.
Yeah, Austin and I finished that up the morning of the fifteenth, and he was gonna drive it and hand it over. So, this really, I mean, if you decide to do that, it doesn't change much.
I mean, because at the end of the day, it's how are we gonna pay for it?
Right.
Right.
Right. It has to be done one way. The question is, do we do the phased approach, or do we do the whole project?
Sure.
And...
I think we'll have a better idea after the election.
That's it. I mean, we gotta see how that vote goes, but we still do have to address the issue that was pointed out by Jason in the newspaper article.
Sure.
It gets us part of the way there, but if that sales tax, even if it is approved, is probably not enough to pay the bill without some additional source of funding.
It's not, but without the sales tax, it's gonna be a lot harder.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. It's gonna be a lot.
And realistically, how much do we... If, either way, how much do we put toward the infrastructure, and how much do we put? Because without knowing whether it passes or not, it's gonna make a big, huge difference. So, motion to table till next meeting?
Yeah, till the tenth. Yeah, I think so, too.
Terry, any input?
I just wondered about the eleventh being a holiday, so are you gonna...
We bumped it up.
We moved it up to the tenth.
To the Monday.
Yeah.
Monday.
Okay, not a problem.
So, motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Consideration of special event request for the First Christian Church?
So, in your supplementals, you received a copy of the special event request for the trunk retreat for this week, Friday.
Yep.
Pretty basic, pretty standard, barricades.
Nothing different than they've done the last few years.
Nothing different than previous, no. Same stuff.
One block of walnut, right?
Yep.
Safety for the kids, safety for the...
It's a great event. Great event.
I'll be serving candy in costume.
I will not be in town.
Going forward, because the First Christian Church, we always do this. It didn't give much turnaround time, from the time you got it, I think, when I...
Yeah. Yeah, we got it on the sixteenth, I believe.
Yeah, so, we might try to do a better job next time of getting it to the city earlier, because that was only, like, seven days, maybe, to get it.
Yeah. Yeah, we're supposed to have thirty days.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. We'll get that. We'll get that turned around, yeah.
I could throw my wife under the bus.
I saw her name on there. I'll make a motion to approve the special event request for the First Christian Church for Halloween.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Mills?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would say our office is down in Loyola, so if anybody's out there, once it stops down, we're now local, so it's okay.
Awesome.
Great.
That sounds great. Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi, staff update.
We'll pass out. I'll be quick on this one.
You might be quick, but we may not make it quick.
Okay, so, starting at the top. Local business highlights. So, we are working with several local businesses to find a space, one rental, one purchase, one's a service, one's a retail, and they're both going to be downtown, so hopefully I'll have some good news in the coming months to letting of some local businesses that are opening in town. Same with Colony. I'm working with some people in Colony to kind of expand their market as well, so we'll see if we can get some expansion going and some more revenue for both communities. Also, working with a resident for a business, on a business plan for potential, again, growth downtown. The goal that I've talked to recently is everybody wants to be downtown, and I love that, so I will happily help liven those buildings the best I can with interested parties. So, that's the goal, potentially three new, in a perfect world, in the next few months, so more to come. Countywide, community support, we have... So, community highlights, we were able to help Kincaid with their roads, which was fabulous. They paid for labor and materials, so nice little sharing of resources there. West Valley, some of the other communities in Anderson County are gonna be joining with the NRP, the Neighborhood Revitalization Program, so we're getting all of their, all of the requirements made, so that coming this new year, the entire county, every community in the entire county will be eligible for NRP. So, we're going to get that, and we'll get that done by December. I just joined the Crest CTE Advisory Board. Great program. They meet a couple times a year to kind of share what business opportunities there are with the kids, how they cross-collaborate within the classes, and how they work together, which I think is phenomenal. Coming up, we'll have our Regional City Clerks meeting. I've had, I got an email out about that. We're hoping to have something in December. And the community collaboration, we're gonna forego the fourth quarter and meet in January, so start at the top of the quarter instead of the end of the quarter moving forward. So, I have emailed out to the communities who are not present, that will be going over projects for 2026 in January, so I'm trying to collect all of those ahead of time, so we can kind of discuss some cross-collaboration, sharing of resources, and pull our efforts together, because I know there's a lot of projects throughout Anderson County that are gonna wanna be done in each community, might as well do them all together. Hopefully, that will be progressive in the future as well. Grants, so I did submit the Kansas Water Office Grant for the waste line. I submitted it the end of September. Likewise, Austin Masters submitted for Kincaid for their technical assistance. They'll essentially be the stage behind us. I submitted ours for the Project Implementation Grant. Theirs was for the technical assistance, so the PER, and that first step for them. Also, I've kind of connected some people with the Hub, which is a state resource that helped federal grants, but they are now expanding their opportunity to do more state and local grants as well, so we have some support there. There's a lot of community projects that... I don't have time to help everyone, but I have time to be facilitator and help where I can, so I've connected those specific projects, so that they can get a little more assistance, direct assistance, and I'm there for letters of support, reviews, revisions, making sure we meet all the criteria and eligibility moving forward. The Garnett Library did submit a seed grant today. Andrea took care of that. I helped with some revisions and fine-tuning, make sure we got everything in in time, but they have a good project, so I have high hopes for them as well. Regional and statewide engagement, our regional workshop is still going forward as planned. The date is still April twenty-second, which is a Wednesday in 2026. It will be in Osage County. I'm the reporter for the grant awarded, and so I have to make reports at the end of each month, so I've made September and October's monthly reports so far. Starting January, we'll have meetings more frequently, so I can have more details coming. We're just kind of fine-tuning budget and planning ideas. We wanna have every county be represented at this workshop, so that we can have some... I can get information from Osage and Coffee County, they can get information from Anderson County. We have some shared resources, we have some opportunity for some entrepreneurship with food. We're trying to bring food from each of the counties, so that it's not just from one, it's a representation of everyone that's participating and hosting. My October was very much spent at conferences, so I attended three conferences in October, which was many hours. They were all very good for their own thing. With CEC, it was a really good retail conversation and conference. It really stimulated the economy. You could see the livelihood of the community that participated, and I have high hopes for our future when seeing that. The League was more basic overview of rules and procedures. I did get some economic development, continued education credit, so that was a nice little more deep dive in there. And then the Kansas Tourism Conference was, most recently, in Manhattan. There were some great speakers. I took away a lot, and I have some ideas. I was very happy that Chamber Director Sandy Mills was there also. We had some good collaboration and idea sharing, and so there's gonna be some things coming in the future that I hope we look forward to, namely, starting next month, we're gonna have a collaborative co-hosting of a town hall just for information sharing and a consistent regular place for the public to come in and talk, so we can get some dialogues going there on a regular basis, and kind of get some more information of how we operate, what goes on, how best can we collaborate, what we do together. It'll be hosted by myself, tourism and community development, as well as Chamber and the Community Foundation, so the four of us will be co-hosting for a three-month series, November, December, January. After January, we'll see how the public likes it, and see if we wanna, if this is something we'll wanna continue. So, more to come this weekend on that, but I did want to let you know, because... After January, we'll see how the public likes it and see if we wanna, if this is something we'll wanna continue. So, more to come this weekend on that, but I did want to let you know, because the first meeting will probably be right around your next meeting, and I would like it not to be a shock to everybody. Um, looking forward, so YUC, I've had a, I had a meeting with St. Rose, um, teachers today, so hopefully we're gonna get a third school involved, which I think will be phenomenal. Um, Crest is still excited on board, and I'm looking to find, to nail down some dates with Anderson County Junior Senior High. So, once I get a date established that is, like, okay by everyone for our state comp, or our county competition, we'll get that nailed down. I have to decide and, uh, make that statement known by November 14th. So I have about two weeks to get that date nailed down. Once it is, then I will once again be asking for sponsors locally and for attendance and judges. Um, so I, more to come there as well, and then the NRP I already mentioned, so. That is, that is my month in a nutshell.
Busy.
Busy.
Questions, concerns? All right. Thank you.
Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion items. Park Road striping.
So, included in the packet was also two quotes, um, two different options for striping. I was hoping to have, uh, numbers back from, um, Electric Distribution Superintendent Har, uh, he's still working on those for the additional lighting. He did go out, I mentioned, there's 13 lights currently along Park Road, and he, there's availability to add six more. Um, the lights that are there, um, would be replaced with a, uh, larger lumen. And so, I'm waiting to hear back, but, um, once he gets those numbers, I can provide those to you as well, but in front of you, you should add two quotes. One from Seahawk and the other from Precision. Um, both are rel- relatively local. One's Lawrence, one's Udora.
Pretty close, same.
Relatively the same.
Yeah, within $300.
A couple of comments I'd like to make before we go any further with this. I asked Mr. Wilson to put this on here. Um, I was approached by several of our senior residents, if we could consider it. So, no matter which direction you all wanna go, it's, it is what it is. And, and I know the, you know, when I first brought this up, the comment was made, you know, we've, we've never done it before. And I understand that. But that, because we've never done something before, does that mean we shouldn't can, maybe consider doing it now or in the future? Forty years ago, how much traffic was on Park Road? How many people lived on Park Road? How many businesses were on Park Road? How many schools accessed Park Road? How many churches were on Park Road? Did we have, um, the Recreation Center? No, it was the National Guard back then. Did we have this, the how, the senior housing, the low-income housing? All those factors, you know, we need to take into consideration. But again, it's.
It also accesses the, the most used public park.
Exactly.
The Northlake Complex.
You know, um, now, and, and I've heard, and playing devil's advocate here, I, I've heard the comment, well, you know, the county's not gonna, I'm not concerned what the county does with Park Road or their section of it. Something that in the future, maybe we, as a city, should consider, do we annex the rest of Park Road, both sides going out to the highway? I mean, as we look at the city map, there's, there's pockets. In the future, a- again, it's not gonna be me, cause, but, one of the things we, we as a governing body should be looking at is, do we look at squaring up some of the boundaries of the city? You know, as we look at, we want growth, business, um, obviously the number one, to have any of that, just taking care of the infrastructure, which I think we're making a lot of progress on, uh, over the last couple of years. But those are all things that, you know, how do we move forward? And, you know, do, if we're not moving forward, we're going backwards and, and.
You're standing still, you're following behind.
That's right, and, and so I'm just, a- and it goes into be there too, and, and that, you know, the next thing is, which direction do we, do we wanna go?
I, I appreciate your comments, and I respect, uh, I think you made some, some good points on the striping of the road. I, I think for me, where it falls, $10,000, $11,000 probably doesn't sound like a lot of money, but in the whole scheme of things, we need every penny we can to do some really needed infrastructure. And so for me, when I look at that and you talk about prioritizing, like, when we talked about all the laundry list of things that we'd like to do, we really need to start looking at our priorities, what needs to be done and what would be nice. And for me, this is more of, it would be nice to do the, the striping, but we need, uh, more money for infrastructure, and so, that's, that's kind of where I'm at on that. I'm, I'm not saying it, it, it isn't needed, and, you know, you're right. It might, I think I was the one that said, you know, we haven't done it in the past, and you're right, that's not a good reason to not do it. But I think a good reason to not do it is, we need every penny we can to move forward with some much-needed infrastructure, more than we need striping on Park Road, but that's, I don't know.
I, uh, I don't feel strongly one way or the other. I, I agree with both of you. I think it, I do think it would, um, it would be easier to navigate with the stripes, especially during, uh.
Weather like today.
Weather like today, for sure. Travis, were we under budget on that, on that resurfacing?
On Park Road?
Yeah.
Uh, we were slightly, um, and that's why we did the curb work on First Street.
Okay.
Needed it really badly.
Okay.
There was another section of road that we were gonna do, um, but kilo got pulled off, and it was gonna be mid to late October for them to come back, and I'm like, I'm not doing asphalt that late. And I'm glad we didn't do it, because it would've turned out horrible, um, with the temps the way they are. So, yes, this year we would have, we would come under budget simply because we cut out, and it was like, what, a block and a half that we were gonna do extra? So, yes, we cut out, I don't remember what the initial quote was.
In?
I wanna say their initial quote was like $299, and we cut that block and a half out and then added the curb in, so we saved, I don't know, $10,000 or $12,000.
In, in this year's budget, is there the $10,000?
In the road special highway fund, I would say yes. Um, it's gonna be close.
Okay, can I ask this? Okay, so.
Special highway doesn't have anything to do with any of the infrastructure items.
Right.
It's solely, that's.
For roadway.
Yes, that's roads, strictly roads.
Okay.
But if we didn't use it?
What happens to it?
Would it be left there so we could do a, a road, another street or something extra, more than we planned on doing?
Correct.
Which is the.
Or more curbing or.
Is the square on the, uh, on the.
It is not.
It's not.
Because it came in higher than what we wanted.
Oh, sure.
We were anticipating a number, and it came in higher than the number we anticipated.
How much higher?
Uh, a little over $100,000 higher.
But it is the downtown area?
Yeah.
Good.
That was the whole square?
Yes. Yeah, we were, what I budgeted, we felt comfortable with what I proposed to you guys and what was approved. We felt would cover it. When we got the bid, it was $100,000 higher. Um, we also talked about doing all the sidewalk, leftover sidewalk around. Um, I believe total project for the asphalt and the sidewalk was about 1.1 million. So. So, yeah. Cause there is a lot of ADA issues on the south side that need fixed.
Right.
And that's why we were like, well, if we're gonna do the concrete, or do the asphalt, we might as well, we, we need to look at the concrete.
It was like four years of that special highway fund.
Yeah, yeah. And it didn't make sense to just try and do the asphalt. I mean, we could do a budget amendment, which I don't like to do.
Right.
And do it, but you're still left with broken down concrete.
Right.
And a lot of ADA, we, I mean, so, so, yeah.
You deal with the, uh, the driving and not the walking.
Correct, correct.
Could you do the sidewalks and wait to do the asphalt?
Sidewalks was more expensive than the asphalt was.
Asphalt's cheaper than concrete.
Would be, okay.
Yeah. Donnie and I spent numbers of hours in my office coming, cause that was the goal, was to do that next year. That was the big goal. And it's just not.
Not in the budget, no way.
Budget, it's just not. So, unless, again, like I said, if I do a budget amendment at the end of the year, which again, I don't like doing, I like to stay within what we get, so.
I, I guess, the, the last question, if, if we moved forward and did it, is it gonna have any major effect on your budget? That what we've budgeted for the rest of the?
This year?
Yeah.
Um, I don't think so. I thi- I think it's doable. So, no. It ain't gonna go over budget, if that's what you're asking, no.
And it's not gonna have a big effect on.
On next year's.
On next year's budget either.
No.
Cause those are, those bids are just way over our capability.
Yeah. What's the, uh, with that project being, um, not feasible, what's the, uh, priority turn to?
So, we've looked at Cleveland, um, we've looked at First Street west of the highway, um, but I think what we've really focused on, um, is Second Street. Um, it's got the same thing going on with it that Third Street had from basically Oak, uh, where we had the exposed, uh, brick. Uh, but it's like, it's, it's that way down by the alternative school really bad. Um, it's also by, um, Advanced Healthcare there on, on the corner of Second Maple. You've got exposed brick there. I mean, the asphalt's thin, super thin. And so that's probably gonna be the priority. Vine Street's another one that needs to be redone. And if we went that route, I'd like to go full length like we did on Elm. We went from First to Seventh or Eighth. Um, I think we even, might've even went clear to the tracks. But some of those are in pretty rough shape. Um, Second Street is probably the priority.
Are we following that plan?
Yeah.
Okay, so which one of those that you mentioned is act, actually should be the next one that we do?
So, Second, Vine are, are two that are up there. The square was actually above those two.
Yeah.
Which is why we were aiming to do it, and we just, we just didn't have the budget for it.
But the Second and Vine is in, within the budget?
Right, yeah, yeah. I think we can make that work.
So to do, I mean, if we did the.
You'd have to do one or the other. You'd have to do Second or Vine.
Okay.
And to do the square, you're gonna set other projects back.
Correct.
A series of years, a number of years.
Yeah, at least one, if not two. Cause that's a, I mean, if you think about it, that thing's what, three, four cars wide each side?
Oh, yeah.
Easily.
Yeah.
So, and we also, um, sometimes those, those bring forward other challenges. We found, uh, the stormwater pipe there on the cor, northeast corners broke. We gotta fix that.
Have we started looking at that yet?
We camered it, we just haven't, we haven't started digging on it yet. But we know it's broken.
Yeah.
So, it didn't really make sense to, also to pave it if we got that issue to go do. And then, of course, the water lines underneath there aren't their greatest either, and so we've, we've been talking about redoing the water lines all around there as well. And so, sometimes it's one of those deals, like, yeah, it'd be great, it'd look great, uh, make the downtown look even better, but there's also a lot of stuff underneath there that needs to be addressed prior to that.
What was it some of the other communities did? I don't know that it was necessarily a grant, but it was something to redo their downtown area, and they got a.
That was downtown redevelopment a few years ago, wasn't it?
I'm trying, yeah, I'm trying to think of where.
It, it was, it was a state grant, I remember that, that's.
It was in, it was when Mr. Weiner was here. Where, where did, where was he at before he got here?
Uh, Gerard.
I, wasn't it Gerard that they completely redid?
The main highway, that might've been a sea clip, actually.
Yeah, okay. I just didn't know if there was anything out there that we could combine with money that we have.
We can look.
And still make that happen, but the square, the sidewalks.
Yeah.
Okay.
With, a- as I, as I told our, our seniors who approached me, I would bring it up, I will make a motion to, which one was the lower of the two? I can't remember. I know it was only $300 difference.
Wasn't that when it was?
Precision.
Yeah, Precision striping for $10,500 to stripe Park Road.
Would it hurt to table this? I would actually like to talk to some, some more people about it. I mean, I, I too had people, uh, ask me about striping and, and the feasibility of it. I kinda wanna, I, I wanna think this one. I mean, it's, it's in the grand scheme of things, $10,500, uh, like we said, uh, a small portion of the budget. I agree with Jody. If we could put that somewhere more, uh, towards a, towards a project that's more necessary, uh, but I also think that striping, that would be, um, I think that's also necessary, but I wanna, I wanna a little time to think about it. I mean, $10,000, I, I think, I want, I want another, another two weeks to, to think about it, maybe talk to some people that live on Park Road.
If we're gonna look at this a little bit longer, because when I go down Park Road, I don't, I don't know that I necessarily think it's the striping that makes it difficult to see. A lot of places, there's not enough light.
And that does give us time to get back.
You alluded to that, so it's like, I don't know that it wouldn't be, I'm not saying I'll change my mind, but I would like to see like,
Sure.
where they're thinking about putting that lighting and, and that, I mean, that could solve it as well. I mean, I just don't, I don't know. I don't know if it's.
I, I think either one would.
Yeah.
Make the, the residents happy.
I agree.
And that, so, so, yeah, well.
I guess if the lighting would, would be a better fix.
Okay.
Cause it's like we have pennies to deal with, and if we ended up doing it, I'd wanna make sure it was the best, solved the best way possible, so I guess.
I agree.
Wondering if maybe.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that, I'm really not changing my mind, but at least we're looking at a project that if it decides to go through, it's really solving the problem that needs to be done, because honestly, I, I, I just feel like there is not enough lighting.
I, I agree, I mean.
On that road, opposed to the striping, you know what I mean?
With, with Halloween, it's a couple days away.
Right.
I worry driving down that road every Halloween, uh, because it's dark. And striping doesn't solve that problem, but lighting does, and, uh, I, I do think, and there's a significant portion of that where there's, um, we're getting better with the sidewalks, but not, uh, they don't go past, uh, Casey's at this point, right? Um, they don't go past, uh, Casey's at this point, right?
Um, so they go clear down to Country Club.
Yeah.
We connected them into Country, uh, right there on Country Club. They dump out right in the exit of Country Club. And then they stop.
Right.
To Casey's.
They stop at Casey's.
Yeah, Casey's. Going west, yeah.
Yeah, and so there, that's something else that we've looked at also, extending that clear over to Family Dollar.
But there's, there's a fair number of people that walk Park Road down to the, the, uh.
Trail.
Yeah, down, well, down to the trail and down to the grocery store.
I, that's what I was gonna say. I've seen a lot of people walk on that road to get to the grocery store.
It's a busy, busy road.
Sidewalk would be great.
I, I think your points are, are, uh, well made when it comes to the expansion of the town on, you know. What, uh, has been developed there over the last few decades. Um, so I think safety, um, demands that we do something, uh, whether it's striping or lighting, but I'd like to hear from Troy, what he thinks with the, the lighting.
And the cost.
Did you ever visit with Chief King or the?
Yeah, so I, I asked the Chief King, um, for input on him, uh, on this, uh, and he didn't really, um. Like the idea of striping. Um, he wasn't behind it. I think a lot of that was, um, you're gonna have a lot of more, that road's narrow. Believe it or not, you add lines to it, you're gonna have a lot of people crossing center line.
I mean, we already do.
And you already do, right, but now you've got it striped, so you cross center line, cop sees you do it, you're probably gonna get pulled over. So there's that also, um.
But is that a bad thing?
No, it's not a bad thing. I mean, unless you're getting pulled over, then, I mean, yeah.
It doesn't, doesn't matter when you get pulled over, you're gonna think it's a bad thing.
But that was one of the things.
But that's a safety issue.
Is, it's narrow and he, he really didn't feel like it was a, a good idea.
Did Troy happen to mention, because putting up lighting means several more poles?
He said not, you wouldn't need any additional poles.
Yeah, cause we've got poles that don't have lights on them.
Correct.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be changing, so the, the, he told me what they were and I can't, I can't remember how strong they are, but the new ones would be stronger lumens. Uh, and then he showed me, I think, he had a, a document that had like seven, six or seven different styles. And it also depends on how the, the light fans out, cause there's different.
Oh, yeah.
And so, but I think it was style two and it fans out, the best way I can see it looks like a elongated football. It just covers more area and it's brighter. Um, and then he talked about some additional arms that reached out a little bit. I think he said six foot arms. And so, he, he acted, uh, like he wouldn't have to do any more poles, just using the system.
Okay.
Yeah, cause that, that would be expensive.
I, I think either, either one would be, would be an improvement.
I think the lights are gonna be unbelievably expensive too, I mean. Yeah.
He talked like he thought maybe three hundred dollars apiece per light. So, and then we, uh, there's thirteen there now, you'd add six, nineteen total. I think I, a rough ball to about fifty, seven hundred dollars for the lights. Uh, I don't know how much the arms are. That's a rough estimate, so they could come in more than that, they could come in under that, I don't know.
Yeah, let's see if he can.
Yeah.
Give us some information.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, you did have a motion on the floor.
It died for lack of a second. Yeah. So we'll just move this to, uh, the November tenth meeting for more information. A, B, infrastructure, our favorite topic.
Yeah. Uh, so Commissioner Cole wanted me to add, uh, add this to the agenda, so I don't know where, how you wanna discuss this or what, what you wanna discuss?
I just think when we attended the forum, that was the thing people were saying. You know, you talk about infrastructure. What things are you gonna tackle?
Well, I think you gotta, gotta.
We've got the water treatment plant. We would have the wa- waste, the sewer lines.
Yeah.
Got the generators coming for the power plant.
We've already addressed the power plant.
Two lines getting built out, uh, one out Fourth Street, one out toward, um. Between, uh, by the, um, by Hurricane Services out, uh, by the co-op, good lord, couldn't think of it. Um, let's see, what else? We've been doing, we did two big water replace, uh, water main replacements over off of Pine Street earlier this year. Uh, there's some gas line replacement going on right now down Oak Street. Um. So there's quite a bit going.
Right.
Gas line, First Street that we replaced.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So where I'm going with that is, could we not get that out there? Because the average citizen doesn't know that we've got all that going on.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think several times before people vote, it'd be nice to see that in print. Like what we've got going on and what we've actually started working through, so people have some idea. And, and, and I think we all said to them, that was our priority. That was our number one priority, was the infrastructure over the.
Right.
The things that would be nice to have.
I, I know for myself, you know, my time's short, but as I look back at where we were when I came on the commission three years ago. With the infrastructure and where we're at today, I feel that we've, we've moved miles of he- ahead. And, and are moving forward and.
With the pennies that we had, I think that's, that's the point.
Yeah.
There's so much.
But we, we really have done a lot to improve the infrastructure of the city.
Right.
But if you think about it.
That was one of my biggest goals.
Yeah, and the conversations that we've had, most of the people that come up and they report about what the lines are like, are like, well. They're like a hundred years old or they're fifty years old. And so when everything.
Yeah.
Pardon my French, goes to hell in a handbag at the same time.
Yeah.
You, you, you've gotta start chipping away at it. And I just, I, I feel like, uh, if I did, if I wasn't on the commission. I honestly don't know that I would know all these things that these guys have been doing.
There's a bunch of holes, you can't miss them. Just saying, like, and I don't mean that, I don't mean that in a bad way, but I mean literally, there's, there's holes on, on Pine Street. There's holes on Oak Street. There's where we, we still gotta do the, the final connections. I mean, there's, uh, there's a lot. There's one on Olive. There's an open hole on Olive right now, where a gas line, that's a, uh, that we're gonna be fixing. Um, Bear Steel Line that needs to come out.
I would say most people already know whether they want the sales tax or not. But I would like to see us make at least a gallant effort and seeing, here are all the projects we've got going with the pennies that we have right now. And with the pennies, if it doesn't pass, here are the big things that we've gotta figure out how to do them, because they.
That's right.
Sewer, if it collapses, I mean, you have to find a way to fix it, you can't just leave it like that, so.
Continuing to move forward on the, on the water treatment.
Yeah.
I mean, those are all.
The main, the main responsibility of any municipality is to provide its residents with utilities.
That's right.
And all the.
Infrastructure.
I feel like the water treatment plant, I know it's been like nine years in the making, but at the same time, we didn't buy it off a twenty-two million dollar project.
Right.
And, and that all of us are gonna have to pay for, only to find out from someone like Naglach, who's actually done lots of them. Probably, you know, ten to eleven thousand is probably what it should cost you.
Million.
Not, not twenty-two, million, yes.
We wish we could do it for ten thousand. The heck with, the heck with striping, let's get that, get that water plant done.
All right. But anyway, yes, millions, but there's just, you'd have plenty to do the striping and the lighting if.
Well, I know.
You did it for eleven million instead of twenty-two.
So I, I did some digging, I know it was mentioned, it's either last meeting or the meeting before, about a substation, another substation.
Yeah.
Uh, I did some digging back in twenty seventeen, that was discussed, and back then it was a little over ten million to build a new one.
Yeah.
So, eight years ago, it was over ten and a half million to build a new substation and, uh, and add, and that was, that was the discussion about building one five miles north of here. Um, the thirty-four five line crosses there right before, um, I think it's right, right around Potawatomi, if I remember correct. Uh, and they were talking about tying into that, um, but just to get that built back then was ten and a half million.
Yeah.
And so fast forward eight years.
True.
Um, and grand scheme of things, if you think about it, um, about the same time, if not earlier, a wastewater proposal was presented. Uh, for one point six million. And I wanna say that was around twenty nineteen, twenty seventeen, seven, twenty fifteen.
It's almost eighteen.
And so now it's eighteen.
Yeah.
Um, I, I found the, the map, the map is eerily similar to the one that Midwest created. Um, and, I mean, the, the project was eerily similar at a fraction of the cost. And so that's the challenge that we're up against, is back then, nothing happened. That plan was presented and that was all that happened. Um, I've got the minutes to show it.
I, I, you're also dealing with pennies to try to make all those things happen, whether it was a lot or, or a little, so. I mean, the budget will only go so far.
Correct. They, they probably didn't have the funds back then to do it either.
But I think we have made a lot of progress.
I do too.
And.
Yeah.
Inch by inch, we're getting there.
Yeah, just gonna take a while.
Hope it keeps going in that direction.
Yeah, so for whatever that's worth, if there's, yeah, I. I, I think it might be worth it to at least get some of those things out there so people can see it. Whether it's on the website or in the paper, probably too late for the paper, but just get it out there so they at least know.
Yeah, we have been trying to make things better for them.
Yeah.
One of the, the main frustrations for Garnet residents is the power.
Yeah.
And the frequency of the outages. I know you mentioned at the sales tax forum about being, having discussions with Four Rivers. Any, uh, anything to report there?
Uh, we haven't had any since that initial discussion, uh, but it doesn't mean we're not going to, because I still wanna approach that to see if that's even an out, option. Because if we can't get it reliably from one and another one can provide it, then I'm not afraid to ask that question.
Absolutely.
We should.
I mean, we, we, um, I was told I was foolish for doing it, but we did that with the gas.
And that worked great.
Saving money on the gas.
Yeah. Um. How much time would you need to get with Four Rivers stuff?
Uh, just reach out, just have another, set up another meeting.
Okay, can we put it on the, maybe not next agenda, but the one after that?
Yeah.
Let's revisit it, so we've got, uh-huh.
Yeah, it's certainly worth, worth exploring.
Yeah, cause we don't have, we don't have a franchise agreement, um, with our current one. Um, of course, KMEA will probably have to be involved with that since they're our broker.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, but we have a pretty good relationship with those guys, um, but you gotta start somewhere.
Absolutely.
And if it, if it means switching, it means switching.
Yeah.
Whoever's gonna give us the best service.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's, that's where it needs to be.
Correct.
That was the best thing that we ever did.
Oh, with that gas service.
It stinks that we had to pay for the gas gouging and still are, but a good thing came out of that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. He, he's a good guy and.
Yeah.
Done a, done a great job.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, trash truck.
So, B and C kinda tied together, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna preface this, um, rewind back to. Oh gosh, I don't know, a year, year or more ago. Um, we were, well, even further back, we were budgeting in money for tax reserve and tax litigation. Uh, due to some, uh, uh, protest, tax protest.
Right.
Um, since then, that is settled, um, has been settled, I believe, for two years now.
Yeah.
Uh, so we quit budgeting that in. Um, we ended up having to pay back some interest and then some, I think it was tax overage. Um, which we had enough in the reserve, in the, uh, the reserve fund to do so. Um, and so we are left with a, I'll just call it a surplus. Um, you all at one point had discussed using that surplus to fund the swimming pool. Um, which, um, those talks pretty much kinda faltered. We really haven't talked about that much.
How much money are we talking about?
We are sitting on a little over a million dollars.
Okay.
Um, I have reached out to our auditors about putting that back into the funds that, um.
We took them.
That, okay? Uh, so it was general fund, airport, public safety and debt service. Um, of course, the airport, I'm gonna put it back in the airport, simply to pay for the, keep paying on the airport project.
Right.
Um, to offset some costs there. Um, PD, uh, public, uh, public safety, fire, uh, PD, um, gonna give their money back to them. Um, when I reached out and asked the auditors, if once I move that back. Can I move that over into capital improvement or equipment reserve?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and our auditor said, yes, as long as you have the budget authority and your cash, just typical budget stuff. As long as your fund doesn't go over budget, you have the cash to do so. So, what, we, Donnie and I have had numerous conversations about this. Um, a couple of years ago, we bought a, a new trash truck. We are leasing that through Patriots, uh, lease purchase. Uh, we still have the twenty seventeen trash truck. Um, over the last two years, I believe we've had sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars worth of maintenance on that truck. Um, the DEF system, three times. Um, and so, out of that million that's sitting.
All about those things.
Out of that million that is sitting there. Uh, coming back to the general fund, we're looking at, um, around a half a million. So, what I would like to do is pay the current note off. And then take the rest of that money and put it into our gas utility. Um, we have a lot of Bear Steel Line in the ground that needs to come out. Um, I mentioned Third Street and Olive because that's a big chunk of it. Uh, and there's a bunch elsewhere. There's also some PVC in the ground that needs to come out. Um, PVC on gas lines is actually a no-no. Um, and so, we owe, I think, a little over a hundred on that trash truck. Our payments actually, our annual payments actually due, uh, in November. Um, once that's paid, it's gonna be about seventy-two thousand, so I would like to put the rest of that money toward our gas utility. We've talked about water, we've talked about electric, we've talked about, uh, the water plant, we've talked about sewer. We haven't mentioned anything about gas. Uh, we've got a trash truck that is starting to nickel and dimas. And so, with the current budget, if we repay that note off, we have enough to budget in a new trash truck payment. And then, use the rest of that on the gas utility. And that would take care of doing some work on every infrastructure item. Um, so I wanted to pitch that out there, and that's why you guys were given two quotes on trash trucks.
Yeah.
How much would that leave for the gas?
That would leave, uh, probably about four hundred thousand to fix gas line. The goal that we started last year, um, and this kinda ties in a little bit to my eval. I sent you guys some other documents that I, that I had been putting together, that we've all been putting together, especially including subservice. Um, a, a lot of our gas is low pressure and the biggest expense is the regulators. Um, with high, switching all over high pressure. So this is a safety thing for, for the community. Uh, we need to get away from low pressure.
Right.
Um, we've got sections that are pretty close to being able to switch them over to high pressure. One of them is around the vet clinic. Um, we actually built a brand new line to the vet clinic last year, year four. Um, after the new clinic was built, they were struggling with gas supply. Um, they've got two heaters in that building. Um, we built the line out thinking that it was a line issue, uh, so we, they're actually on a high pressure line now. Turns out, the contractor that built the line didn't blow the line out, so there was stuff in the line, and so they really didn't need to do it anyway, but. Digress, we now have a high pressure line that was, that is cooked, that is hooked in. All we gotta do is change out some things to make it all high pressure in that one area. Which is huge. Um, we've got another situation similar to that up around, I think it's Orange, where there's high pressure mixed in with low pressure. And so, we've addressed or have a. And so, we've addressed or have a plan, somewhat plan, for every other utility, every other infrastructure item but the gas. The gas hasn't really been talked about, and it's, I would say, the most concerning in terms of safety.
Okay.
So.
What? I apologize.
No, go ahead.
Regulators, you said that's the highest?
That's the, yeah, they're expensive.
What, for, okay, so in this one, I would say, you get the same regulator for every one you've gotta replace or does?
Every single house needs a regulator, so you're, I think they're around three, four hundred bucks. So, I mean, they, they add it quick.
Okay.
So.
Okay. So four hundred per household? In a perfect world?
Yeah.
For just the regulators, that's not the,
That's not the line, that's not,
Right, that's not digging in.
No meters. All need to be replaced really bad too, I mean.
And you guys have worked on a, like a systematic approach to it? Okay.
Ideal world, you wanna change out about a hundred of them a year. And.
How many households do we have, just?
On gas?
Oh.
Sixteen hundred?
Yeah.
So, I mean, rough, rough ballpark. Six hundred and forty thousand just for the regulators. One per house.
Okay, but you were gonna chunk it out, so I guess I was thinking, do you have any way of guesstimating, like if you were gonna do a hundred, what it would cost for the line, the meters, the regulators to do like a hundred of them? Is there any way to just, I, I need,
How much was it, the steel line?
Uh, it's for, to bore a line is thirteen dollars a foot, that's if they hit no rock. If they hit rock, it's fifty.
It's fifty.
So, I mean, they jump up a lot because rock is hard on equipment.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, which one do we just do? The line over on Oak, Oak Street, it was about, what, four or five houses? And that was twenty,
Twenty thousand?
Yeah, twenty thousand.
Two thousand.
Okay, and that includes the regulators, the line, so.
Well, that one, that one I believe still low pressure.
Still low pressure, so it doesn't have one, it doesn't have a regulator.
This was a bear steel line that was leaking, non-reparable, it was also corroded, we have to replace it.
Okay, and you said for four to five houses, twenty thousand or four thou, okay, four houses? I'm just trying that.
No, you said twenty thousand, right?
Yeah, twenty thousand for, and that was, four hundred feet of pipe?
Are, are, are we doing the work?
We were there helping with the work, yes. We dug the line, laid the pipe, and then our guys at the time were not OQ'd on the butt fusion or whatever. But yeah, we were there, yes.
Okay. And remind me again, we've got these people that are teaching us, training us for two years?
Yeah, we got one more, we got one more year left.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yep.
Do you still feel like that's?
And they're also, they're also here to help us with our infrastructure, to help get it up and going, get a bunch of stuff replaced, I mean, they're,
Okay.
They're here to do a lot, I mean.
Okay, so the training goes through twenty-twenty-six, December of twenty-twenty-six, or, okay. Do you, do you feel like that's been helpful? Do you feel like we're gonna be able to take over after?
For, for, the training part is, is we're getting there, we're getting a lot better OQ system for our guys, versus what we were going through with the state, or, the state of KMEA. Um, the biggest thing is just the expense, because we don't have the budget to have contractors in all the time. So that's kinda killing us, but we're getting it, we're getting through it. So, I mean, we're just, we're piecing it here and there the best we can.
So if we started this project with the gas lines, would that be something that our crews would be able to ju, to do that, or are we gonna have to figure in, um, the training?
No, the training is already budgeted in the regular budget.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought, okay, okay.
Yep.
So they would, let's say we started it in January, that would give us a whole year for them to help train our people who would be working hand-in-hand with them, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The other, the only thing with that is, is personnel, 'cause anybody that does gas has to be OQ'd. So I can't have other departments over there helping and everything, it has to be OQ'd, qualified personnel.
Okay, and, yeah, I understand.
And it just kinda limits us to have another department.
Okay. But a year of training, then you guys,
Yeah, they've, they've got, They've got quite a bit knocked out this year, they still have some modules to finish, and then field testing, so that they get blessed off on that, whatever, and there, there's how, how many different qualifications? There's a bunch.
There, yeah, there's like fifty-ish, I think, so, somewhere there.
Like one could be detect a gas leak, another one could be do a butt fusion, one could be weld the pipe, one, I mean, there's just, and a lot of them are just, um, situational, not every day, gonna hop and go. So, it takes time.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's one thing you don't wanna get wrong.
Right.
Okay.
So we still, this is another one that we've started, and like I said, we, we built that line out down there. Um, we've, we've been replacing bear steel lines as soon as we, and the problem is, there's a bunch of them. Um, the state came down, was it ten, said ten years? Yeah. Yeah, every, all bear steel has to be removed in ten years. And so, really wanna push, like I said, this is, we've talked about every other utility, every other infrastructure, we haven't said anything about the gas.
I think this is, is, would be a great use of those dollars.
I agree.
Everybody that lives in the community to understand that the, the biggest piece of that, of this chunk of money, isn't going towards any of the training, that's why we've, because I thought we had, we've already budgeted that out, so, that entire amount, so that, that would be great.
That would all go towards lining.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I, I think that would be a great use of that money.
Alright, yeah.
Yeah, so, so you just need them.
That was the money, coming back to the general fund, did that also include the money coming back from debt service?
Yes.
Yeah.
So you just need a motion to,
To utilize that money, or to put, to transfer it in after the general fund, transfer it to the gas department?
Yeah, so, so in order for it to work, I've got specific instructions from the auditors to make it work, I gotta transfer it back to the funds and then transfer it out of the funds.
To the capital improvement.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could I make a motion that you would follow the direction of the auditors to transfer the money appropriately? And we specifically talked about it, going back to the gas department?
I think I've asked Kyle about this about four times, 'cause I wanna do it the correct way.
Absolutely.
Um, 'cause the last thing, I don't wanna cause an amendment or a, a violation, but I said, I don't want, I don't want us to just dump it back in and then lose it. I wanna be able to continue to use it, and the capital improvement fund is the easiest way to do so. Because it just, while we don't use rules, into the next year, it just keeps going, and so.
And I'll second her motion. You can get the fine print, how it's supposed to be according to the auditor.
They also took care of the trash truck, okay.
So, is everybody clear?
Any questions on the trash trucks?
I, Are they both the, uh, twenty cubic yards?
Yes.
So, which one do you want, the Alpha or the Cobra?
We've already got a Cobra, it's been a great truck, um, the biggest thing is, there's, one's a Freightliner, one's a Peterbilt. We're trying to get, I wanna try something different other than a Freightliner, 'cause that's what we've been having so much issues with. So, try something a little different, let's see how it goes. They are, I mean, they're just up there a little bit more expensive, 'cause of what they are, but.
Right. So that would be the Alpha?
Uh, no, the, the Alpha was a Freightliner, the Peterbilt was a Cobra.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I thought it was a little cheaper.
Either, I think either box would be good, the, the Alpha had like AR five hundred steel on it, so it's a lot thicker, but it's also six to nine months out.
Ah.
Where the Cobra is up, ready to go.
Before you go, can I clarify that your motion includes the auditor's direction on the transfer of money and the loan, the payoff, the loan on the trash truck?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause we kinda hop from one to the other, yeah, thank you for cleaning that up. Quick question about the trash, are the guys using the trucks to pick up the trash bins, they're not physically trying to pick up, okay?
The only ones that they're probably doing that with is the ones that we don't have capabilities picking up, like, 'cause we still got customers out there.
Thirty-gallon cans, forty-gallon.
But everybody that has the new one, it's using the automated system.
Yeah, but all the new cans, they're using the automated system, so.
How many?
Working out great.
That oughta cut down the work comp a lot.
Except for, how many are they having to lift, because then you still get into,
Um.
um, safety and liability.
Not too many, there's, I think mostly everybody's gotten rid of the barrels, I haven't seen too many barrels around anymore. Sounds, seems like they're getting out of here. It's more of like the thirty and forty gallon cans, you know, the smaller trash cans that have three or four bags in them.
Are they just refusing to use the new trash barrels, or?
Um, I think it's, we haven't really, I know we've been saying the ordinance, uh,
January.
Come first of the year.
First of the year.
Okay.
Really start pushing to use our trash cans, and then still trying to figure out how to, certain, some people get two cans, or, 'cause there is some of those residents that are a lot bigger.
Yeah.
I mean.
We're still trying to work them, but.
Yeah, I get that, I'd rather give them an extra trash can than the guys get their shoulders hurt again, and then you're down a person, and, I mean, okay, okay, thanks.
Trying to make sure we have that clean.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carried. Okay. So. The informational items. Light the Night Truck or Treat, hosted by the First Christian Church, will be held at the First Christian Church at Second and Walnut on October thirty-first. Doesn't list the times, but that's,
Five to seven.
Five to seven. The Citywide Cleanup, No Brush, will be held November third through the seventh. The twenty-twenty-five General City School Election will be held on Tuesday, November fourth, don't forget to vote. The Garnet Rotary Pancake Feed, hosted by the Garnet Rotary Club, will be held on November fourth from eleven AM to one PM, and from five PM to seven PM at the First Christian Church. Can't scoot that time up any earlier in the morning for those of us that have to hit the road at seven o'clock in the morning?
I don't think so.
Try.
You can come in for dinner.
The Small Business Saturday, hosted by the Garnet Area Chamber of Commerce, will be held on November twenty-ninth. The Garnet Fire Department Chili and Soup Supper, hosted by the Garnet Fire Department, will be held at the Garnet Fire Department on November twenty-ninth. The Fifty-Fifth Annual Christmas Parade and Lighting Ceremony, hosted by the Garnet Area Chamber of Commerce, will be held in the Downtown Square on November twenty-ninth. And Santa's Toy Shop, hosted by Melanie Maudlin and Laura Holland, will be held on November first. Or, excuse me, December first. And Citizens to Be Heard. Signing of approved city documents.
Uh, you also might, um, put it on your radar, gonna need to know about the parade. I haven't been asked about that yet, but who, uh, if you're riding the float, uh, in the parade.
At this point, I plan to.
Okay. If you wanna get back to me for the next meeting.
I'm going to have to figure out if my coworkers will, um, throw a fit if I don't walk with them this year. I didn't make it at the, uh, at the fair parade.
Place it out, so you could be in the front, and then you can hop off the float.
I tried to do that with the fair parade, and then I got caught up and didn't make it back through with my, uh, with my work. I love making two trips around, especially if it's raining and thirty degrees.
Yeah, yeah.
I want us to find you a Grinch hat.
I could come up with one.
I'm hoping that the third time is the charm and it will be a
Oh, man.
Nice, beautiful evening.
Yeah.
'Cause it's rained every year.
I think they, I think they've been,
Cold and nasty.
Yeah, I think there's been more bad.
I sure was really cold.
And, and, I plan on being there.
Now, um, executive session for non-elected personnel. Is there more than the one for just the three of us?
Yes, Jessica.
Okay, so we,
Why don't we do hers first?
Let's do Jessica's first, who else do you need, Jessica, the, besides the three of us?
Travis, I mean, three of you is my priority.
So that first one's gonna be probably, not gonna be non-elected personnel.
Right, this will be, this will be trade secrets, or, land acquisition?
Land acquisition.
Land acquisition.
Proper terminology, Terry?
If it's land acquisition.
I'd say it's land.
Land acquisition.
How much time?
Right.
Jessica, how much time do you think?
What do you need?
I, I could check it out, twenty minutes?
Okay, okay, so. Uh, I have, I have right now, it's seven twenty-four, so let's say seven twenty-five? Or twenty-six? No, let's, let's start at seven thirty for the twenty minutes, that way we can,
I'll second.
Okay.
You second?
Aye.
All in favor?